Okay, good morning. Happy New Year. Yep, we do that once. Happy New Year. Jim. So, good morning and I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert. It's January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I'll just make a comment that Director Aguilar is with us in person, so we will not be doing a teleconference today.
I'd rather be here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad you're here. And so would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Good morning, um, let's see, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be arriving shortly and we'll notate that for the record on his time of arrival. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, should be here in a minute. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Not that I see any, none. Except for those guys. Hearing none. Let's move on to special presentations and recognitions. We have two anniversaries and I believe they're both here, and then we also have one retirement. The retirement is Scott Davenport with twenty-five years as operations supervisor in domestic water. So wish him well, and then we have two anniversaries, both twenty years. And I'll read the, the their little write-ups and then we'll do, we'll have you come on up. So first one is Jose Ponce with twenty years. Jose started his career in the water industry with the city of Indio and he worked with Indio for four years where he learned the basics of water and providing for the needs of the public. This gave him an edge in coming to CBWD in January of two thousand and five as a domestic construction and maintenance worker in the meter repair division. Jose worked there for twelve years and became efficient in all things related to a water meter. Eventually, Jose transitioned into the domestic production division as a water quality operator. Here, he honed his skills and has become an asset to the production team with his understanding of groundwater disinfection and the distribution system. Jose continues to push himself daily and is always willing to go the extra mile for his department and his crew. Outside of work, Jose enjoys spending time with his wife Lucy and their three children, Ariana, Romeo, and Josiah. Congratulations and thank you for your service to domestic operations thus far. And we also, with twenty years, we have Jaime Valenzuela. Our Jim, Jim Valenzuela has spent twenty years carving out a twenty-year career at CBWD. An Indio native, Jim spent fifteen years in construction and irrigation sales before taking his father's longtime advice to craft a career in public service. In two thousand and five, he joined CBWD's construction and maintenance team and crafted his toolset in construction maintenance, pressure control devices, and domestic water treatment. As a distribution operator too, he inspects the district's wells, reservoirs, booster stations, and sample stations. Jim's meticulous work with construction maintenance, as well as the ion exchange treatment plants, earned him the nickname MacGyver among colleagues, a nod to his ability to piece together creative solutions. Outside of work, Jim's passion for woodworking reflects the same ingenuity he brings to his job, turning raw materials into something meaningful and lasting. He also enjoys participating in the annual CBWD Employee Social Association and golf tournaments. At home, Jim finds strength and inspiration from his wife of thirty-three years, Julie, and their sons, Michael and Matthew, and together they enjoy making memories, especially if it involves camping. So congratulations, both of you, on twenty years and come on up. We have something.
Your photos, and then you can tell a joke or have a speech.
You want to leave it on there? Is it on?
So you can make remarks if you want, or no?
They can probably hear you.
Well, I was told I wasn't gonna say anything, so I wasn't prepared. But I just want to, I just want to thank everybody that helped me out in my career. First fifteen, first five years were the hardest, the last fifteen kind of a blur went quick, but I just enjoy working here. It's an honor and it's a privilege to come to work every day. It's a it's good to come to work and enjoy what I do, so. Another, hopefully another ten years. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just to reiterate what Jose said, you know, I'm glad that I've been here as long as I have, and I appreciate everybody who's helped and pushed me along the way and, and the everybody that I work with, all the people that, like I said, gave me advice, starting from my career in Albert Padilla up to now, working with David and Scott, who retired, everybody's given me good advice, so I appreciate the twenty years I've been here. Thanks.
Great. Morning. Just note for the record that Director, Vice President Estrada is joining the meeting. I don't know if we said that earlier, but welcome.
Thank you.
So we have consent calendar items six A through F? Is that the last one? Yep. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, I'll move approval, but I would like to ask if we could get a hard copy of item C, the district's annual comprehensive financial report. Okay, great. Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Past five oh? Cool. Alright, so on to our ordinance eight A. Chris? Morning.
Morning, President Powell, members of the board, presenting the annual ordinance fourteen forty-two. This is the ordinance that we establish every year that sets compensation following the implementation of the COLA increases, as well as any jostling of positions that we decide to make throughout the, the calendar year. You guys have a redline copy as well as a clean copy. I trust you all have reviewed it. I'm open to any questions, otherwise we're just seeking the adoption of ordinance fourteen forty-two.
Sorry. You know, I was reading through this and it wasn't apparent to me, and I don't recall exactly what the COLA was this year. I know the numbers were all adjusted, but I didn't do the math.
It was a two percent COLA.
Two percent, okay. Thank you.
John, I'll move approval of the ordinance. I'll second.
We have a motion, a second? Got it? And
We do have a roll call.
Okay, go ahead. Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Five oh.
Thanks, Chris. On to the action calendar nine A. This is an interesting one to me, I'll be honest. Go ahead, Robert. This is adding another year to our replenishment curtailment. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Morning, President Powell, members of the board. Happen you. For you to consider today is the extension of one more year on the current Tom C. Levy curtailment program. So if the board recalls, we entered in this program in two thousand and twenty-three for three years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Since we're one of the first agencies to take advantage of the Bucket One program, I think the rules were still being sort of hammered out. You know, I think the original System Conservation Implementation Agreement proposal basically said up until two thousand and twenty-six. So that to us suggested that it was up until two thousand and twenty-six. So as we're going through this program, you know, we did a couple of things. I think one was taking, taking a look at the impacts to our groundwater levels. And happy to report, and I think it's actually in your board report as well, that the impacts have been pretty minimal. I'd say less than seven feet in one of our more critical wells. And to date, we've actually, I think, conserved something like on the order of seventy-nine thousand acre feet. So I think the total out of original agreement was a hundred, a hundred and five thousand. So it was towards the latter part of two thousand and twenty-four that, you know, we, I think staff was discussing the impacts of the curtailment program. And the Colorado River is still not completely out of the woods yet, you know, still been kind of a dry year. Negotiations are still ongoing on the post-two thousand and twenty-six guidelines. So we thought there might be an opportunity for the board to consider adding on another year. We discussed this with reclamation. I had some discussions with reclamation during CRUA to see if there might be a possibility. So during, during that time, and I think the week after, I think they agreed. It's not just for our program, for, for other Bucket One programs who did not take advantage of two thousand and twenty-six. So anyways, I think I'm happy to report that they reached out to us, asked if we're interested. I think we got the agreement hammered out, the extension hammered out in record time. And so it's basically just amendment, changing the dates. There's no differences like in the terms or anything. So if the board agrees, this will be for another thirty-five thousand. So bring in our total to a hundred and forty thousand for the four years, and we would get another fourteen million on top of it. So to date, out of the, agreed on forty-two million for the three years, we've already actually received thirty-eight million out of that. So this would add on another fourteen million on top. I think if the board agrees to this, I think the only lingering piece of agreement that would be needed is the California forbearance agreement, because ours covers only up until two thousand and twenty-five. But I think a few other agencies are in the same boat.
Yeah, they can, they can, good. Okay, good. Appreciate the work you have done on this. If you, if you could roll back a few years, I, I would have been certain that we wouldn't want to go another year just because of the impacts that it might have on groundwater, but
Right.
those impacts have been less than what I thought they would be. Great, right? So
Yes, sir.
So, so this one, let's say we get halfway through that year and, and we decide, you know, we don't want to risk not putting that in. Can, can we reduce the curtailment a little bit? We have some flexibility?
I, I think so. I think our agreement, as you recall, basically says up to thirty-five thousand. Now, you know, the monetary part, if I'm kind of projecting out what reclamation is going to do on this one, like they did previous, they'll give us, you know, twelve out of the fourteen million, once we submit our water order, and that's typically done like in, you know, September, October of this year. But I imagine that, you know, I think reclamation understands, you know, things happen. So if we, you know, roll it back, I think there's just be, you know, some financial adjustments, I would call it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, probably it won't, that won't happen, but I just was curious if that's provisions of the, in the agreement.
Right. Oh, and sorry, just one more point that I've neglected to make. So President Powell, you made the comment about, you know, project or anticipated impacts on the groundwater levels. I think, you know, the board knows that Oasis has come online, you know, I think kudos to all the staff who've kind of pulled all this together. I think, you know, last year we got off to a later start, I would call it, but, you know, I think last year we were planning something like, you know, four thousand acre feet. I think this year we're projected to like, you know, do something, you know, under order of like fourteen thousand, five hundred. Of course, these are all just estimates.
This is delivery through the oasis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So anyways, you know, for whatever that's worth, that's, that will minimize, I think, some of the impacts, you know, from the, you know, the recharge. And we're also, we're not completely ceasing recharge at Levy. As you recall, you know, we're recharging, you know, up to a little bit over two thousand, like twenty-seventy-six acre feet a year that we're allowed to do, and we've done so.
Robert, the, the only comment that I have, and I think I've, I've made this comment before, is that you know, I'm trying to figure out if there's a better way to pass on these benefits, call it the fourteen million, and it's fourteen million on top of the forty some that I think we already are part of. And, you know, the thing that comes to my mind is, is the thought that there's, you know, probably over a hundred thousand people that pay for replenishment charge. And that replenishment isn't happening. And so I have a hard time trying to like come to terms with that. I, you know, I, I don't I can't seem to figure out how this revenue that we're generating is, is benefiting those people that are still paying for that replenishment charge, and now we're proposing to do four years of it. To give you an example, that would be about just for the city of Coachella, I think that would be maybe close to two or above two million dollars of replenishment fees that the city would pay. I imagine it's probably double or triple that for the city of Indio. And, you know, you have other main pumpers out there, farmers and such. And so, you know, I've been trying to get a sense of what we're gonna do with that revenue. I think there's some ideas, some comments that have been made by staff, but not sure that, that those things have been finalized, and so so we, I, I think we need to get a sense of what we're gonna do with that and and try to figure out how we can spread this over the, the folks that are paying this replenishment fee. And so, you know, those are my, my general comments. I don't know how, what, how you make sense of them, but but it's a lot of money. And it's for water that I think people are paying for, and we, we have a program for, we have a program for agriculture, right, for farmers that get a benefit if they don't use the water. So how are the people that are paying for replenishment, you know, getting a similar benefit? I, I don't understand it. And so that's, that's my, my comment, and I'm not sure how, how I'm gonna vote today, but but I would hope that if this passes, that that as a board, that we really put a little bit more emphasis on what are we gonna do with, I mean, that's probably over fifty million now, right?
Yes, so it's forty-two plus fourteen, so that's fifty-six million in total.
That's not a little bit of money, and I think as a board, we ought to figure out what we're gonna do with that. There's a lot of people paying for this replenishment, and so those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that not being a question and being more a comment.
That's a comment.
So I, I think, you know, for, for me, it's because the opportunity is here, you know, to, to get the funding, that's what we're asking for. And you're right, I mean, I kind of see the, you know, where, where the money is distributed, and certainly I think there's a lot of, you know, places where we, you know, where the board can consider putting this. And I think what you mentioned, Director Estrada, is, you know, certainly one of those places, but I think that is, you know, becomes a board discussion. So anyways, that's, I'll, I'll limit my comment to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think that through, you know, in two thousand and twenty-three, before it got wet, we were at such a critical stage at Lake Mead and Lake Powell that we were looking at mandatory curtailments. And I think that the program that was devised doesn't just like happen in one year, and so it's taken from two thousand and twenty-three, I mean, actually, you know, at exponential speed to get us to this point, and I, I think it's a great, great thing that we can do for one more year, and I agree with you, Director Estrada, is that there's a lot of discussion that has to take place about, you know, what we're gonna do with those funds, and I think, I'm pretty sure, knowing this board, it'll be some robust discussion about how to equitably, you know, utilize that for our water management. Super pleased that the commissioner and the U.S. Bureau, you know, suggesting we can go one more year, and I'm, I'm supportive of it, and especially to know that the Oasis project is coming on, online with more in lieu recharge, as well as not too much of a impact on our water levels in the groundwater basin. So thanks for bringing this, Robert.
Of course.
Robert, I, when I first read this, and I was already aware of it, had a concern about the, the modest declines in the water levels, which doesn't appear to be a problem from the staff's perspective, but I'm just curious, how, how are the how are the minimum thresholds set?
Right. Thank you for your question. The minimum thresholds are set, I think, based on, you know, the lowest levels that was agreed on during the Sigma compliance. I, I'm trying to remember, you know, the exact year, and I don't know if Zoe is around, but I thought that was like nineteen ninety-seven. But, or maybe I got the dates wrong, but there was like a minimum level that that, you know, was measured in CBWD's wells, and, you know, basically we said, okay, you know, the target is never to get down to that level.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I appreciate that, thank you. I just wonder if, given the environmental conditions that we're facing and climate issues, if, if those thresholds should be revisited, or if they have been revisited.
Right. I, I think once they're set, you know, those are the targets that we operate to, sir. And I know that we, you know, go out on a routine basis, you know, to monitor, you know, for these wells, you know, since we are in a Sigma compliance mode. You know, I think we do interact with, you know, environmental, or environmental services, you know, to make sure that, you know, we are in compliance, and I don't think there was any suggestions that, you know, this has been an issue. Of course, you know, I think the President Powell's point, do we have a way to kind of extract ourselves? And I'd say yes. You know, should things decline further.
We can revisit. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Yeah, I'll move the approval of item nine A, the extension of our replenishment curtailment.
Second.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post?
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. That passed five oh. B. This is this new thing. I've never heard of this before. Hi, Carrie. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. So Pulte Homes has a project called the Explorer Project in Palm Desert. They're planning three hundred and thirty-two units, and we are a member of this California Statewide Communities Development Authority. And basically, they form and administer these community facilities districts for these developments so that they can fund their fees and the public infrastructure. So we've done this in the past for several other projects. Yeah. Cotino.
Yeah.
We've, for Verano in, used to be Rio Vista, a project called Camp Neely in the city of Cathedral City, so it's, it's been around for a while, and Carla looked it up. Thank you, Carla. The organization's been around since nineteen eighty-eight, the, the state organization, so. Anyways, the recommendation before you today is to adopt a resolution which authorizes the community statewide, California Statewide Communities Development Authority to form the CFD within the district boundaries to fund the public improvements specific to, to us, water and sewer, and the various fees. And then to also set forth terms and conditions in a community facilities district agreement, approve the form of the funding and acquisition agreement, which is attached to this board action item, and authorize staff to cooperate with the CS-CDA in connection with the formation of the CFD and the financing of it. However, there's no fiscal impact to CBWD. The developer's responsible for all the costs to form the CFD.
Okay, so we've done it twice, so it, it works?
Yes.
It, it, obviously, we wouldn't propose it again if it, yeah, I mean, it sounds like a much better solution than us trying to figure out how to do that.
Right, it saves us from having to administer it or keep track of things, so, yes.
Good.
Yeah, and I've, I remember you bringing it before, and I think at that time I was trying to get a sense of what our part in it, in it is, and and I, and you answered, you said, oh yeah, it has no, no fiscal impact to us, but, but in, just like in a nutshell, what, what is our involvement?
So the, the developer puts together a li, well, and we help them with it, but attached to the agreement is, is the amount that they're going to issue bonds for, and so it's about nine point nine million. And so some of that is for the actual installation of the facilities, and then some of it's for our fees. So what happens, like, when they finish the water installation, they'll send us the backup data, and they'll say, you know, this is how much it costs, these are the fees that we are, you know, these are the fees that are associated with the water, and basically it's just an accounting, and we just have to go through and check that it lines up with, with the fees that were presented in the funding and acquisition agreement. And then we process it for payment. So basically, we're telling the CS-CDA that they can reimburse the developer.
Okay.
Or that they can use the bond funds to reimburse the developer.
Okay, makes sense.
So we just do, we just do an accounting to make sure that that it all matches up.
So the developer's putting all the infrastructure upfront?
Right.
And then there's a reimbursement?
And they're getting, they're paying for it through these bonds instead of paying for it out of their pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Which gets paid back through the, what, property tax bills of the
Or the property owners, yes.
Of the property owners. Yeah, like a, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's pretty clever. I mean, I wonder why they don't do this for substations?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Not that they need a substation here, but, you know, East Valley has a big issue.
And, and this is separate from what, there, there was a comment made about you know, we're not doing the accounting, we're not doing we're not being the bank, right?
Right.
No. So the new
We're not.
Because at one point, we used to have CFD, we used to have CFDs and assessment districts, right?
Yeah, we've had a few in the past, but we tried to, to not have them because they are very time-intensive with forming them and then, you know, administering them, and there's bond councils involved and different other, you know, legal fees.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve nine B?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Passed five oh?
Thank you.
Nine C, I will be recusing because I have a financial relationship with one of the parties, so I will leave the room.
So thank you.
Come get me one.
I'll wait for you to step outside.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
For the record, my name is Sabrina Niese, Engineering Manager for Domestic Water. The item before you today is a request to authorize the General Manager to execute agreements for the acquisition of real properties with Edwin J. Newmeyer Revocable Trust. Stated June ninth nineteen ninety-nine with Sergio Monica Duran and with Empire Airport LLC for the Valleyview Water Consolidation Project. Um the total cost of this request, including title escrow, closing costs and contingency is two hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Um as we've reported on before in prior meetings, construction of this project, including easements, is funded by SRF and EPA grants. Um there are actually three exhibits, um if we wouldn't mind just maybe scrolling through them so that you could see. Um but there's one permanent easement, which we're looking at here with Mon- Sergio Monica Duran. Um the preceding exhibit was a temporary construction easement and the last exhibit is also a temporary construction easement. And I'd be happy to provide any additional information or answer any questions you may have.
Um, would you say this is kind of the last hanging? Things for the project, once you square this up, you you're ready to go to construction?
No, we have one more permanent easement and temporary construction easement that we're negotiating.
But other than that, um everything else is set up?
We're very close, yes.
Okay.
So is this um? Is um, I I guess status on the project, i- is is the project still? Uh kind of amendable if other um permanent easements are difficult to get? I mean, uh it is, it looks like Ed Ed Meyer is a I a um, I guess that's his name. Uh Newmeyer uh um is a, you know, kind of willing participant. Um is the project still in a design phase that it can be amended or are we kind of? The project is the project at this point?
We're at a hundred percent design, um so obviously we can change anything, um but there's expenses associated with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'll second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right, we'll wait for President Powell to take back the mic.
Thank you, Director Nelson.
Sergeant at arms. We feel very safe with him by the door, right? Okay, so assuming we're on C now, right? D, D, sorry, D now.
I'm, thank you, Mr. Barrett, uh and good morning, uh Director, uh President Powell, uh members of the board. Uh first item I have here, it's the Cathedral City Reimbursement Improvements. Uh so the Cathedral City is performing uh street improvements uh on a five different. Uh streets uh within the city limits and because of that, they're impacting approximately eighty-five. Uh water valves and thirty-five manholes uh. That will need to be lowered uh during their road repaving process and then raised back up to grade. Once uh the installation is complete. Uh therefore, uh this item is to recommend authorizing the General Manager to reimburse Cathedral City for valve can lid raising. And manhole cover adjustments associated with Cathedral City's uh twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh s- city street pavement reconstruction projects in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand fifty dollars. And also execute a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and fifty fifteen dollars. And with that, uh be happy to ha- answer any questions the board has.
This is a net zero cost to us, right?
Uh correct, yeah, it's just part of our responsibility for having our facilities in right of way.
Um, just to clarify, there is an expense, it but it's neutral as far as the budget's concerned. We used to do this work in-house, um but we. Never really had great visibility on the city's paving projects. And so it became very disruptive for us to pull our guys off of what they were already doing. To go out and try and keep the city's contractors on schedule. So what we have since done is made arrangements with the municipalities. So that their contractor does this work on time and they just bill us for it. It's a lot less disruptive, it's a lot more responsive, but there is a cost to us.
Got it, thank you. I will uh move approval.
Well, second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, passed five oh, thank you.
Thanks, Rob, sorry to interrupt there, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's a good clarification, on to E, go ahead.
Thank you much, sir, uh so a special domestic water agreement uh is being proposed between CBWD. And the Coachella Valley Unified School District, uh this is for providing water service. Uh to the new North Shore Elementary School, uh which sits on a approximately a fifteen and a half acre site. Uh off seventieth seventieth Avenue uh between Arthur Street and Cleveland Streets. Uh the school district uh is to install approximately seventeen hundred linear feet of eight-inch pipeline. Uh in seventieth Avenue, fronting the school, as you see on the figure, uh they are responsible for those costs. The district CBWD would like to upsize that to a twenty-four inch pipeline. Uh and then we would be responsible for those upsizing costs. Uh the us upsizing costs are estimated approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um if the upsize costs actually exceed this amount there, uh the staff will request authorization for additional funding. Uh from the board at that time, uh therefore, this item is to recommend that the General Manager or authorize the General Manager. To execute a special domestic water system installation agreement with the Coachella Valley Unified School District. And authorize the General Manager to reimburse the Coachella Coachella Valley Unified School District. Up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh for the cost of upsize the eight-inch pipeline to a twenty-four inch pipeline. Uh based on the competitive bids and the process outlined in the agreement, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Excuse me, Jeff, I'm not sure if I should recuse myself on this one since I have property across the street.
Would this project uh? Would this project have any uh impact on the value or use of your property?
I I don't think so, I don't know.
So out of, if you wish, out of an abundance of caution, you can go ahead and at this point, having discovered that you have property across the street. And that it may or may not be impacted financially, you could recuse yourself if wished. It doesn't seem to me on the face of it that it's a strict conflict of interest.
Out of an abundance of caution.
Yeah, I think it's always a good move. Okay, so Director Bianca has left the dice.
I would move approval.
No second.
Okay, uh no other discussion, then we're gonna vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh with one absent.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Just cruising along this morning. Belt press, you got the fun one. Go ahead.
Good morning, uh President Powell, members of the board, uh for the sake of background, um Warp Ten. Uh we treat an average of eight and a half million gallons of raw sewage every day. In that process, we produce between thirty-seven and fifty wet tons of biosolids at that location. Uh the facility relies on filter belt presses to de-water those solids and prepare it for. Uh adequate removal from this facility, the lighter the, the lighter the solids, the less water it contains, the less expensive it is for us to haul off. Because it's on a per ton basis, uh the belt fu- filter presses are used to remove the water from. Uh from the biosolids and uh create a a material that we call cake, that cake is then. Uh haul off uh out of state to Arizona to a facility for disposal. Dewatering of wastewater solids reduces the volume, improves the operation and reduces cost for subsequent storage, processing, transfer and disposal. Uh the installation of a new uh filter belt press, so if we were to uh just take this down, install a brand new one. Uh would be a significant capital investment and it could be up to two million dollars and would take. Uh approximately a year to uh complete the project. Uh refurbishment, on the other hand, uh offers us a more economical uh and faster delivery alternative. Uh the operation, this option minimizes downtime and allows for more rapid uh return into full operational capacity. Uh by selecting Andritz, uh the manufacturer of the filter belt press, uh as a single source provider. It allows us to uh keep the original manufactured uh parts in service. Uh installation from a trained technicians at Andritz and uh it gives us uh direct from the manufacturer pricing. So as far as uh budget impact goes, this project was uh budgeted in this year's budget. Uh for approximately four hundred thousand dollars, um and there will be no adverse uh impact. To the budget based on the amount uh that that they gave us for a quotation to complete the work. Our recommendation to the board is that uh you authorize the General Manager to execute a CSA with Andritz separation. Uh for the belt press, filter press project at the Warp Ten in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-six dollars. And approve additional contingency expenditures expenditures of nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh for a total request of one hundred thousand dollars and with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'll second. Any other discussion? Then uh all in favor, say aye. Aye, passed five oh, thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, Tom. And. Looking for a new engine. For a D eight. Oh, you've already got it, yeah, so we're, now you're just telling us about it.
Good morning. President Powell, Vice President Strata and members of the board. We're here this morning asking you to ratify the purchase of a new Caterpillar D eight dozer engine from RDO Equipment. In the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and approve additional contingency expenditures of seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. For a total requested authorization of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There is sufficient funding in the twenty twenty-five motor pool operating budget and as such, there will be no adverse impact. CBWD staff did receive and evaluate four quotes uh via informal bids. RDO quoted one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars for a new engine. And ninety thousand six hundred and fifty-five for a rebuilt unit. Uh Quinn Caterpillar quoted the same engine for one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And one twenty-seven eight ninety-two for a rebuilt unit. We reviewed the quotes and determined it was in the best interest of the district to purchase a new motor from RDO in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand. Eight hundred and sixty-seven, and just might ma- want to make that point again, this is the same engine. We, RDO ended up purchasing the the engine from Quinn, so uh the thirty-five thousand dollar difference was pretty significant. The D eight dozer is required to perform extensive earthwork uh within the Coachella Valley Storm Channel to convey stormwater flows. And along the Coachella Canal, additionally, the equipment is necessary to perform maintenance at the Whitewater Groundwater replenishment facility. CBWD staff procured the new engine as it was available immediately and RDO was able to uh commence. Uh the removal of the seized engine uh from the dozer uh immediately as well and we anticipated the completion before the end of twenty twenty-four. This also avoided the potential of losing the available engine that was there at the time uh to another entity. Uh as well as adding several weeks of uh additional downtime and a minimum of two additional months of rental. At an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars per month for a rental unit, uh so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. That includes installation, right? That's, yes, that's everything. RDO is putting that in for it? Correct, and it's at their Indio shop, so it saved us a trip to Riverside as well, all on that thing. Great.
Yeah, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Go ahead, I'll give our second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a good move, I think, good move. Instead of waiting, it's been five weeks since we've had a board meeting, you know. Yeah, good, all right, so uh ten A, written communications, we did have um. I think one was on there, right?
There were two, there was one during the holiday time and then one that came in um over the weekend and we have a a copy that was distributed to the board. Just an update on those.
Thank you. And then we have a presentation by um our folks from DC, why don't you guys come on up?
Thanks, Scott Barrett, with the Department of Public Affairs and Customer Experience and I. Our federal affairs team is here, Anna Schwab, Lowery Crook and Chris Kioshin. And they're gonna provide a federal affairs activities update, there you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, good morning, everybody, it's great to be with you today. Um we're gonna try to keep this very high level pretty quick, please ask us any questions that you might have. Um looking at twenty twenty-four, really overview of the hundred and eighteenth Congress as well, which was twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And where do we see things heading in to this new administration and new Congress here in twenty twenty-five? That's our faces, so really looking at the hundred and eighteenth Congress. These were a lot of the big pieces that we worked on on behalf of CBWD with your staff and your teams here um in different ways. And again, this is just some key highlights, there was a lot of different things um that went on, but these were some of the significant ones. Looking at the different areas of funding that came to the district, some through uh larger programs that got passed, such as the bipartisan infrastructure law. Which had the Colorado Water Conservation Program in it, for instance, as well as community project funding, which has come directly from Congressman Ruiz. And been supported by your senators and Congressman Calvert as well in the past. Looking at, again, working on Colorado River, we're gonna really see this one and we'll talk about this more in a minute. But Colorado River has been coming up obvious, for obvious reasons, um and things do have to be approved by Congress, so one that we're really gonna be focusing. Here in the next Congress. When we look at California water infrastructure, it may cause a chuckle because we're in California and a lot of our priorities are water infrastructure. But when we say that, we're really looking at the major projects outside of the service area that CBWD supports, such as the state water project sites and others. That add to the value and strength of California's water system and thereby supporting CBWD's strength as well as you all support. PFAS is one that is not gonna go away, no puns intended, that it's a forever chemical, but we have advocacy we're gonna need to keep doing. But we, in the past Congress, what we've really been focusing on is how to protect the rate pairs and protect the district from manufacturers like. What should be the manufacturer's liabilities and not the district's liability on this as well. And there have been actions such as the MCLs for PFO and PFOs, the hazardous substance designation and a few others that EPA has taken. We'll talk about more in a minute. Water Smart Grant Funding is an interesting one, it's a program that has existed for a while and one that we're gonna be working to reauthorize here in the next Congress. But also one where the district has been receiving funds to advance different infrastructure projects. And in our roles, making sure that the funding is there and that appropriations is actually filling those accounts so that you all can apply for the grants. But also working to get letters of support from the congressional delegation, so when the applications go in, they're um strengthened with those when we can. The Water Conservation Rebate Tax Parity is one that we're gonna keep working on here as well, it's one where. The district is is supporting um in your past uh legislative principles because it essentially would make it when the district gives a rebate for water conservation. Right now, it's taxable income and what this would do is put it on par with other utilities who give rebates for different conservation measures. And it's non-taxable income and that's what this measure would do. And in this new Congress, there will be some sort of tax package that's gonna be put together, be it through the reconciliation process or different. That this hopefully will be able to be addressed in. Um protecting CBWD operations is one where it's comes in kind of a little bit of everything, be it. Making sure that the regulations and different legislative measures that are coming down are never gonna hinder what you all are doing. Um be it with your operations, within your grounds, in your, oop, as I hit the microphone, in your facilities, um in different pieces. So that one is very broad and encompassing in a lot of different ways. So that one is very broad and encompassing in a lot of different ways. In the past Congress, CVWD also did support the MPDS Amendment to extend the term of the permit from five years to 10 years. And that's one that, you know, there's a lot of benefits to in terms of making sure, as we know, sometimes negotiating these permits can take a while. So if we had 10 years, it would give us a little bit more time and still allow us to be compliant with our permits. And then, of course, a continued partnership with the Bureau of Reclamation through almost everything, right? With the Colorado River Water Smart Programs and other pieces. CVWD and the Bureau have a really strong relationship, both as a district and then back in DC as well. So making sure that that circular relationship continues here. Anything on these we want to add? So what are we heading into? You'll see a lot of these look familiar. They're going to sound similar, they look familiar. Why? Because some of the, the work's not done. Some of the work, the work is never going to be done. We're always going to need to be a voice and have, you know, our foot in the door on these things. Colorado River is front and center. It is absolutely going to be coming up as the post-2026 guidelines are continued to be negotiated. That will, that does, once an agreement is reached with the Bureau in the seven states, does have to go through Congress to be approved. So we will have congressional hearings on that for approval for the Bureau to enter into the agreement. As I mentioned just a moment ago, the water rebate conservation tax parity, excuse me, I missed the word parity there. And so again, that's the one we're looking to add into the tax package when that comes together to ensure that that's no longer taxable income. And also then, that also relieves, not only is a benefit for your customers who are receiving the conservation rebates, it'll also be a huge administrative relief for the agency as well because you're not going to have to collect all that information to make it taxable, you know, for what makes it taxable income right now. We're going to continue working on federal funding for infrastructure. It may look different, right? We're probably not going to have something like the bipartisan infrastructure law, but we do want to make sure we still have Water Smart Program and EPA's programs, the SRF, for instance, is ones that we know the district utilizes. And any other areas where we see federal grants, programs that can be utilized to support the district's infrastructure and goals. Natural disaster resilience, your response, and recovery, this is one, especially as we look at, you know, what's going on. We've had the 100-year storm responding to different flood events that have occurred, and how are we both making sure we're working with the federal government, be it FEMA and others, on resiliency infrastructure as well as when we need to have that response and recovery? So working with them continued on that. Continuing to find support for disadvantaged and underserved communities, so as the East Coachella Valley Project continues, being able to continue to expand that in other areas of the district where we can continue to support those. Again, California water infrastructure, we're going to see a lot here as well as sites continues to grow in this next Congress and next administration and working on different state water project infrastructure that will occur and come up before the federal government and trying to find different partnerships and federal funding programs for those as well. Salt and Sea is continuing underway with the study, and there's going to be points where we're going to have to go to Congress and get some either points of clarification or additional funding or take the next step. So that will be coming up here in the 2025 and 2026. Water quality, when we say that, we go to PFAS as well as Chromium 6 and seeing, you know, following and also working with EPA in areas where we see that. Currently, on PFAS, we know that the current administration, President Biden's administration, did take those measures for PFO and PFOs and some other PFAS chains. That will likely either get slowed down or stopped as the new administration evaluates it, as well as seeing what Congress will do to provide additional protections for passive receivers such as CVWD. Cybersecurity is one that is definitely going to be coming up. And we are seeing it more and more that the EPA and White House are focusing on how to ensure our critical infrastructures, such as water and wastewater, are protected from cybersecurity, you know, malware and other bad actors. And so one that we're going to see, the Department of Homeland Security CISA Office, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, and, Safety Agency, I forget it, CISA, is going to be continuing to partner and provide the guidelines on that. And then lastly, streamlining loan grants, permitting processes and policies, making sure that when you do engage in the loans and the grants and different permits, that it's not adding unnecessary regulatory burdens and administrative burdens for the agency, but it can be as efficient as possible for you all to enter into them to execute the projects. Anything else I'm missing you want to add?
Just a couple of specific things. One is that for last year, the community project funding for the North Cathedral Stormwater Project, we've got $1.1 million in the House bill. Congress has been kicking the can down the road on actually finishing the full-year funding. So now they kicked it to March, but we're still tracking that that's in the bill currently and want to make sure that we secure that when they finalize the bill in March. And I think that specifically on PFAS and water quality, there are proposals in the last Congress to provide protections under Superfund for after the administration designated PFO and PFOs as hazardous substances, and we'll continue to push that in the new Congress.
And then, so one other thing to just kind of put on your radar is why is this going to be a little different than the last Congress that we had as well? Which is, this Congress that we're now in, the 119th Congress, has both a Republican majority in the House and the Senate, and we're having President Trump, President-elect Trump will be inaugurated on Monday for his second term as president. So it's going to be, you know, you'll have Republican, House, Senate, and presidency. It will be very interesting to see how and in what ways they want to coalesce together and come together. A number of members of Congress have been reaching out in different groups with the president already to try to lay the groundwork so that the first 100 days, be it the reconciliation package or other measures that the president is going to want to see for his first 100 days' agenda, can be achieved, and then also so that the House and Senate can see some of the goals that they're seeking in this new Congress as well be achieved. So with that, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, it's a lot, I guess, so the money for the North Cathedral City Project sounds pretty modest. So is that just an incremental amount? And what about the difference?
Yeah, this year, they, and you can add to this on it, but in past years, they had a basically a practical limit on earmarks of about $3 million. This year, the total cap for earmarks was lower, but the number of requested earmarks was higher. And so for practically 1.1, there's like a, it's a little higher than 1.1, was like the limit that you saw across the board for these water programs for earmarks. So it's, it's sort of a system-wide limitation. So it's, I think where we are on generally on funding for earmarks is that there's going to be a little bit of money, 1 to 3 million, that you can get sort of to keep projects going along that you know you can get with your member of Congress. And then we need to look for opportunities for larger funding through the existing discretionary grant programs like Title 16 and Water Smart and SRFs and other programs like that. So it is modest, but it was a system-wide issue that caused it to be more modest this year.
Thank you.
I guess you're done unless you want to sing a song.
No songs this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to Board General Comments. Why don't we start with Director Nelson?
You know, first of all, you know, our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to citizens and friends, family, colleagues in the greater LA area with all the fires going on. This is certainly putting a lot of focus on, you know, water supply, water management, you know, hydrant capabilities and so forth. And so I appreciated the district's kind of notification to customers about our hydrant testing program and maintenance program and capability report. And, you know, at some point, Jim, I think it'd be helpful to kind of review that in terms of, I mean, when these things happen, it, you know, is a good time to say, to look at the hydrants' capabilities. I understand that there were, you know, claims that there were four times the demand of, you know, of regular water deliveries. And, you know, I don't know what our system would be capable of in a situation like that, but it would probably be good to review some of those things. I know that in the Pacific Palisades Fire, that they had three 1-million-gallon reservoirs that they were drawing off of, and to replenish those, you know, obviously, they were not able to replenish those quick enough, and the hydrants lost pressure. So, you know, some of those questions, I think, would be helpful, and since we're, you know, communicating with the public about our program, that, that that would be good for, I think, the board to kind of take a look at and see where we're at there. I did also notice an article in Desert Sun that the La Quinta High School had received some funding and is looking at expansions and so forth. And so I'd be, I'd encourage the district to reach out to the Desert Sands Unified School District and just make a note of the construction requirements for slope lining. And I, I can't remember if that's slope-lined or not, but so just make a note of that. Also, this Friday, Aqua Region 9 is hosting a touring event of the Nancy Wright Water Sewer Plant there in Desert Hot Springs on Friday morning. That should be good event. Tomorrow, at our Colorado River Board, we're interviewing candidates for the executive director after Chris Harris's retirement, so that's on tap for tomorrow. And one of the other things that came out of the supply, water supply focus after the fires was a social media campaign about the company I worked for, the wonderful company, and how the wonderful company and the Resnick's owned 60% of the California's water supply. And it was quite derogatory in a number of ways, both socially as well as egregious facts that were utterly untrue. And, you know, they, the company I worked for does not own, I wish they owned 60% of the state's water supply. We'd probably be in pretty good shape. Actually, it's less than 1%, like most people in this room. And so that was discouraging to see something like that go viral on Instagram and TikTok and Facebook and all the social media platforms. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, we do not own 60%, but, and less than 1% is where we're at. So that's, those are my comments.
Hey, John, I just want to mention, I, last week, I attended a performance at the McCollum. And, you know, you get the programs there. And one of the parties, I usually read them, but usually later, one of the parties that we were with said, hey, there's a two-page spread about the water district in the middle of the, of the performance. Program, thank you. And I don't know how we got this in there, or if this is a regular thing that we do, but I want to shout out to our communications group for doing a really good job. It talks about the progress in '24. The kind of folks that go to the McCollum, I think, are the kind of people that need to read this stuff. So I wanted to mention that to Scott and his staff. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
No comments.
Okay, yeah, I kind of want to echo Peter's first comments about just the awareness of fire protection systems. And somebody had asked me, you know, in discussing those three 1-million-gallon reservoirs, one of which was down for a year, I guess.
That was a 359-acre foot reservoir that was sitting behind the three 1-million gallons.
Wasn't it the one with the torn top? Anyways, somebody said, well, how many tanks do we have? And I said, I really don't know the answer to that question. I hate to even guess. It's 68? I was going to be closer to 40, so 68 tanks. And I know we've, the staff has done a really good job identifying deficiencies with tanks and when they need to be repaired and sometimes replaced. And I think we've done a pretty good job of prioritizing that and funding that over a really long-term plan. I mean, this is kind of a forever thing, you know? And you just stay on the program and keep everything working. But, but I think, you know, looking at that question of, you know, where are we on this? Is this idea of a stress test? And I don't know that necessarily wildfires are going to be the same here that they would be in LA. I mean, just the, you know, we don't have that underbrush that they, that a lot of those canyons have. But, but, you know, I, there, imagine there's a standard way to stress test your systems. You know, one of the other things they said with those tanks was that they don't keep them very full because they don't want to let the water sit in there too long because they have to keep turning the water. I don't know, this is the LA Times. I don't know if that's true or not, but, but I'm curious to know, you know, if you have a million capacity, but the actual effective capacity is something less because your practice is to keep a lower amount in there. I'm just curious where we are on all that stuff. Like, can we do a stress test of our system to say what is, what is it? And what is it capable of? And how much, you know, use can it handle? Because that's really what happened.
That's right. What's our peak demand? What, what, what are pumps? How much are pumps could handle in a peak demand scenario?
Yeah, yeah, I'm curious to see that also. Dan, I know.
Well, we have a study session on the 21st on some cross-connection new mandates that are coming up. We can just add five minutes at the end on our water supply. We have 68 reservoirs, 234 million gallons a day of storage potential, which is about 785. But I'll just add something really light at the back end of our presentation on the 21st, just five minutes or so, just to give you a brief update.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds like a really big number, but it's also over a very large area, right?
It's a very large area.
It's very decentralized, yeah. Interesting, okay, appreciate that, thank you. 68 is the number.
68 tanks. Yeah, and 234 million gallons.
We also don't have a forest behind us.
No, but we do have a pretty significant threat of earthquake.
Yeah, earthquake is probably the more likely.
And we have an emergency response plan, we have contingency plans. Certainly, you know, the loss of commercial power complicates things. I'm reminded of a time when I was at the city of San Diego when the Ramona Municipal Water District, there was an urban fire, wildfire, and the citizens, the residents, were allowed to go back to their homes from a fire safety standpoint, but the domestic water pressure had not yet been restored. And so it was the water district that did not allow people to go back, and that upset quite a few people. The problem was that they didn't have enough emergency generators to establish the pressure back in the system. And so there are a number of contingencies that, you know, sometimes you can plan and plan and plan, but the episode occurs, the scenario occurs, and you just have to go based on what has happened and how to adjust. But we have looked at particular, specific scenarios, and if nothing else, we will be able to dispatch water tankers to neighborhoods so that people can get drinking water until we're able to restore. You know, this is going to depend on what areas are down, what areas are not down. A lot of this becomes a localized impact. For sure. You know, as you can see, there are definitely parts of Los Angeles County that are, that are impacted, but others that no impact at all.
That is true, and, you know, I know, we have 68 tanks now, but how many wells and how many of those wells have backup power generation?
Well, they all don't. I mean, we've got over 100, right? And we've looked at those specifically because of the Chromium 6 issues. And we know that about one-third of them are impacted by Chromium 6. But, you know, as we have come to the board a number of times with projects that need to be done, there is always pressure on the rates to keep them low. And, you know, staff has to continue to make trade-offs in order to comply with how the board essentially wants us to proceed. And so I would just remind the board that there's also...
That is very true. I mean, if, let's say, for example, you need extra pumping capacity to meet the... to meet the demands of a, in the LA area to, for, you know, firefighting. Well, that comes at a cost, and the cost is borne by the, the customers, right? And so there's, there's a balance there. And totally, totally get that in terms of, and, you know, the, the somewhat silly discussion about, well, they didn't have water because of the Delta smell. I mean, it, I mean, that, it, it's not, you know, that's not true. But the cost pressures of water supply from the state water project because of the Delta smell can limit the locals' ability to invest further in infrastructure. And so that's where that, that argument may, may ring more true than the actual water.
There is plenty of opportunity out there for people to pick and choose how they want to play the blame game.
Yeah, yeah.
What I remember, I, I've been here too long, but Y2K.
There you go.
Everyone was worried about, were you here, Dan, were you here back then? No, I mean, this is the late 90s, all right.
I came in June of 2000.
Am I remembering this right? So we thought everything was just going to stop, right? All the computers were going to hit 000 and, and it was the end, right? I mean, the year 2000, January 1, 2000, midnight. So, so I think that's when we first decided to buy a bunch of backup power generators, which are, now those are all 24, 25 years old. And I'm, I imagine those have all been replaced. I mean, are we keeping those going for?
Yeah, I, I would only caution get, getting into too much detail about this, especially if there's going to be a special workshop where you can get all, all the facts.
Well, we can, we can add the backup generators to the discussion, but.
But I just want to make the point that while we don't have backup generators on every single well, we do try to make sure we have backup generators on at least one or two wells in each pressure zone. So that's the other thing to keep in mind is like, some pressure zones have more capacity or demand or are better off, you know, from a storage perspective or a supply perspective. But all of the factors come together. There's transmission, there's the supply, and then there's the storage.
Right.
So, but we've looked at a lot of this really closely with the, in, in relation to the chromium 6 and trying to find non-treatment alternatives. And so there's the ability to, like, stress the system using our hydraulic model and different things like that. So we do have a lot of information then that we can share as well.
So we look forward.
35%, onsite backup generation. We have an enormous standby that can move. I'll put that all.
Look forward to it. Thank you very much, Carrie and Dan. I think that's it for our Board General comments. Unless you want to add something else? Okay, are there any board requests for future agenda items?
Other than what we just talked about?
Well, that was good, right? And then why don't we get into the meetings? I know a bunch of these are Estrada, so we'll skip those. We have December 11, Gulf and Water Task Force meeting, which did occur, and I was there. Covering a lot of the standard stuff, well-attended. That was my last one of those.
You're, you're off that.
Did I get off of that officially? I think I got off of that one, right? No, off of the Gulf and Water Task Force? Did I forget to tell you that?
Well, we will have, at the next meeting, we'll have a review of the Board Committee assignments, so.
I might be getting off that one. Anyways, I was there, December 11. Let's see here, December 12, Coachella Valley Energy Commission Director Bianco.
We had the formation. Everybody voted to form the JPA and also shut down the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, which may still have a special meeting here or there because there may be some talking points that still need to be worked through. So I think that everybody's organization and the city lawyers and IID are working diligently, including CBWD, to kind of mend this thing together and see what's been on the clock.
Yeah, okay. Then Director Nelson, California Farm Water.
Held teams, were, received kind of a planning schedule for Mike Wade's, not departure, but his cutting back in his duties at the Coalition over the next year and a half or so. So doing some succession planning.
Okay, thank you. Unlisted on January 8 was the Legislative Platform, which we, we did not have that meeting. So I didn't do that. January 9, Director Aguilar.
Thanks, John. So I did attend this legislative breakfast. It was sponsored by the Rantamar's Chamber. I was there, Sylvia was there, and Karen from our legislative, who was our legislative person, was there as well. And, you know, Sheriff Bianco and, and DA Heston gave an update on sort of the state of affairs in the county from a safety standpoint. And they both indicated, I'm assuming this is based on fact, that Riverside County is the safest county in the state. And also reported a number of stats about homelessness. Sheriff Bianco, as you know, is an interesting character and study and authority. But the best part of the breakfast was that we had a chance to talk to Glenn Miller, who, who is the Chief of Staff for Congressman Calvert and got some really productive items on the agenda for discussion. Pretty soon, I hope. And also, we were able to talk to Glenn Miller about the issue at Shadow Hills and hopefully got that resolved. So it was a very productive meeting.
Thank you. And then the CVCC Director Bianco.
We had a presentation of our year-long biological monitoring program, what's working, which seems to be everything. We went over our audit for the fiscal year, last year. And then we had acquisition of two parcels in the upper Mission Creek, Big Morongo Canyon, approximately 148 acres.
Good, I wanted to add, December 10, we had the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition Board Meeting, Director Nelson was there also. And we re-elected our board members and made a bylaws change and got results from fish tissue stamples and what else?
Dealing with legacy pesticides.
It's very strange.
Yeah.
Anyways, that, that happened. Any other meetings?
Yeah, John, on January 6, I attended a Section 5 Contractors call with Robert and talking about the progress or lack thereof with the Bureau and the Upper Basin States regarding the 2026 guideline discussions.
I think I misspoke. I meant to say January 10 was that Irrigated Lands meeting, not, not December. If I said December, I meant January.
Got it.
It's going to come down to the 11th.
Got it written down, that's wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a, there's kind of a schedule coming out in terms of, and I apologize, I don't have my notes, but in terms of the Bureau is coming out with their alternatives report, I think before the change of the administration or shortly thereafter. So, you know, there are things happening and, and the Bureau is progressing. And the Lower Basin has some tweaks to its original proposal that many of you heard in Las Vegas. So there's, you know, not give, but kind of trying to address beyond the Lower Basin's 1.5 million acre feet in, in how, how any other possible curtailments could be built into the system as far as quantities go. So that's, I mean, there's progress.
Yeah. Good, anything else? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported?
So move, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed 4-0. And what do we have next? Jenna Rander to report.
Yes, sir, good morning. In addition to a review of the committee assignments on the 28th, we'll also be asking the staff, or at least informing the staff, that we're going to be revising the travel policy. And at that time, it might be helpful to know whether or not the board wants us to adjust the per diem, the stipend. We haven't adjusted that. I think we've only adjusted it once since I've been here, and that was back around probably 2011 or 2012. I can't remember exactly when, back in that time. And so comparatively speaking, I think you all are, are the lowest in the area. But we'll have that information available for you. Perhaps more importantly, staff is extremely involved in making, trying to make sure that the ERP is successful. So we're looking, considering bringing on some temporary hires to at least keep up with the day-to-day stuff while our regular employees are engaged in making sure the ERP is properly, I don't know, fed. From a data standpoint, from a process standpoint, there are a number of meetings that are taking place. I don't want to say it's a distraction because it's really a necessary evil. But in order to compensate for that, we'll be looking at bringing in some temp folks. And so I don't expect there to be a budget impact. I think we've got some vacancy dollars within the annual personnel budget. But making sure that we are able to engage properly with the ERP as it moves along is the priority. And I think we've all heard horror stories of what has happened as other agencies have attempted to do a similar transition, specifically from a customer service and billing standpoint. IID is one of those, the city of San Diego was another one. I think, you know, it's almost expected. But we're going to try and avoid that. I think we've got the right folks engaged. And with the board's support, we've got the right consultants working the issue. So I'm going to remain hopeful. But I just wanted to let you know that we probably will be bringing in some additional folks, at least temporarily, to help us get through these next two years, maybe two and a half. We'll see where we go. But that's all I've got, sir.
Good, good comment. All right, thanks. Counsel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give you an update on the sites reservoir project. The sites authorities are actually proceeding to seek bids to actually construct the project. The first step is a request for qualifications. They plan on doing a form of design build. So the first step is to solicit bids from those contractors or entities that seek to be pre-qualified to even bid on the project. That RFQ went out on January 8. They, the plan is to receive those and to have a short list of contractors who can actually bid on the project by April of this year. Then issue that RFP to say, okay, give us your project plans, give us your proposals, with the schedule to award a contract to a design-build contractor in September. So I mean, it's a long period of time in the, but in the context of everything else that's gone on and the permanent approvals obtained, this is substantial progress. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, somebody was asking me the capacity of sites, 1.5 million acre feet. Had to look that one up. According to AI, I don't know. I think it's.
You've got to have these things ready, you know? I don't want to have to look them up. So any department reports?
Touch it.
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. And I don't see anybody jumping their feet to correct me.
Okay, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. And then we will reconvene following our closed session to report out. Right, the regular meeting is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.